Okay, Small Cities Committee meeting. It's Monday, June 19. It is 6:18 PM. And we're at City Hall. Myself is here. What? Okay. And via Zoom, we have Councilwoman Hana and Councilman Alver. Okay. Number one, Small Cities Friendly Hands Food Bank. Both to forgive and release a small city's lien in the amount of 133,300 contingent upon the sale of Friendly Hands Food Bank property located at 50 King Street. As further described in the mayor's memo dated June 15, 2023, pending City Council approval. Okay, discussion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second by motion by Councilwoman Hana, second by Councilman Alver. Discussion.
Carrie, anything?
No, it looks like a great idea that we do this.
Yeah, I was thinking the exact same thing. I can't imagine voting no against this, so yeah.
Okay. My question is, it says here, the sale of the property. Who owns the property right now?
It sounds like Friendly Hands does, and they want to sell it and use the profits to buy a bigger building.
Who's buying it?
Friendly Hands is.
Friendly Hands.
They're buying it, but who owns it now?
No, no, they own this building and they want to sell it and use the proceeds from this sale to buy a bigger location.
Okay. And so we're going to release their lien. My question, that's why I wish Dan was here. Can we do that? This is a weird situation. You know, this isn't like...
We're just releasing the lien as a contingency, right?
Yeah.
Releasing. Is that, so they hold a small cities loan for 133,000? Does that lien go away now? Does that loan go away?
If they sell the property, yes.
If they sell the property, yes.
And then, and then, does the money come back to the city, or is that just, we're just releasing it? That's what I was confused about, was releasing the lien.
So, it says, "In light of the continued and growing need for a food bank and as a gesture of support for their expansion and enhancement, I'm recommending the council, in accordance with the recommendation of Small Cities Council authorized, committee authorized the release of the city's lien at the time of the sale of the property. The value attached to this lien can be considered a contribution of other funds on Friendly Hands grant application, further demonstrating to the state that this agency and the city are working together."
So it will be released at closing, right?
Yeah. I'm scrolling back, but... So the agreement was in 2000 for 133,000, and only 94,000 were used to purchase the property. The terms of the loan were 0% interest and no payment of principal was required as long as Friendly Hands continued to provide food services.
Yep.
So I guess they're continuing to provide food services, just in a different location, so that must be why we can continue to have the 0% interest and no, I mean, there would be no payment of the principal. They're not going to pay the money back, right?
Right.
So...
I'm looking, I'm trying to bring it up now on my iPad. Sorry, I'm a little late to the day.
I'm not sure if we... We're going to release this lien. Are we going to have a lien on the next property, or is that just go away? The value of this loan.
It sounded to me like it just went away.
It would go away once the sale is consummated.
Okay, I just... This is weird.
Basically, we gave them 133,000 in 2000 to purchase the building and complete renovations and support operational costs for up to one year to establish the food bank. Of the loan, 133, of the 133,300, only 94,000 was used to purchase the property. The balance of the funds were used for upgrades and operating expenses. Performance measures that were built into the terms of the loan were clearly defined and by all accounts have been met over the past 23 years. In fact, Friendly Hands Food Bank far exceeded the annual requirement of providing food for 500 people in the first year of its existence. They serve like 5,000 monthly, it says. So I think, I think we're okay to release the lien. I don't think there's any obligation to hold it.
No, they just left the lien on there to make sure that they were honoring their commitment to the community and which was consistent with the mission of the organization.
I can't hear anything.
No, can't hear me?
No.
I can't wait to have that new technology up and running. It looks so pretty in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, the discussion is David, and I think it's fine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes. Okay, any further business?
No, sir.
Nope.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, second.
Good. Motion, second, Alver. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.
It's one of those motions I never vote against.
That's why I have to...
Okay, if I may, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the City Council and WPC to order. Today is Monday, June 19, 2023. We are here in the City Hall Auditorium. Before we get into the agenda, could we currently stand and pledge the flag? To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. So you'll, the council members will notice that first on the agenda this evening is an introduction of our Juneteenth Mayor for the Day. Today is June 19, which is now officially a holiday. And to celebrate the holiday earlier today, the city worked with Art Culture is Beautiful and advanced for the third consecutive year, a Juneteenth Mayor. This year, we selected Dr. DeLois Lindsay, who is here in the audience with us. We presented her with a proclamation and a declaration appointing her as the mayor, and she shared with a very large crowd that marched from Copark celebrating the holiday with whistles and drums. And we were able to spend a little bit of time hearing about Dr. D's history and what she brings to this community, not only as an educator and as a member of this of this city, but as a woman who has been mentoring and sharing her experience with generations. So, Dr. D, if I can introduce you and invite you to the podium and just share with the council your thoughts of the day?
I'm having a really busy day. Been a wonderful blessing. Thank you for the honor from your honor, Mayor Carbone, and from Art Culture is Beautiful, church members and community members and neighbors and grandchildren and children and just a loving, wonderful honor to represent the city of Torrington, of which I've been a resident, I think, 32 years now. And it's always been a wonderful experience. I love the community. I love the peace. Not crazy about the bears. But it was good, and I thank you, and I thank God for the honor.
Thank you. I appreciated some of the information that Dr. D was sharing with us earlier was her history and her family's history and relating it to another famous resident from the city of Torrington.
John Brown.
Thank you, John Brown. So it was, it was a great day. It was a great way for us to celebrate our diversity and celebrate the important aspects of coming together as a community. So thank you very much for accepting that honor and doing such a phenomenal job.
Thank you. God bless.
God bless you too. All right, with that said, we are at the public comment portion of this agenda. I will entertain a motion, please, to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4, subsection E of the City Council and WPC meeting rules of procedure.
So move.
Second, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Manichia. Questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public. If there's anyone from the public wishing to address the board.
Hello, I'm Dan Santorso. I'm Executive Assistant at Fish Northwest Connecticut Homeless Shelter and Food Pantry. That's 332 South Main Street in Torrington. And I just, I want to tell you a little bit about our pantry and our shelter. We distributed more than 100,000 meals last year, serving almost 600 families. Our shelter served 77 total residents, including 53 adults, plus 14 veterans and 10 children. And Fish Shelter would not be able to keep our doors open without fundraising. So for the shelter, the state passes down federal money, which helps, which helps, and the VA contributes to our budget. But Fish still fundraises more than $168,000 each year. And DOH does not cover the cost of shelter operations. And due to lack of funding, we've been functioning with one fewer case manager and one fewer residential monitor overseeing our residents. So this makes a big difference. And any support from local towns, including the amount from the Community Impact Grant, any amount, makes an incredible difference for our shelter, our residents at Fish. So I'd just like to thank the council and the mayor for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to address the board?
Hi, I'm Joanne Torti from ASAP. We're an educational arts organization that provides joyful learning opportunities and have been in Torrington for nearly 20 years, providing school programs, after-school programs. And every summer, we give full scholarships and transportation for 40 to 50 Torrington children to attend our camp. So I thank you, Mayor Carbone, for recommending our funds to support scholarships for 40 of the students. Without that help, it would be very, very challenging for us. And we are so grateful to be able to continue our relationships with these children through the summer. And our goal is that they feel more inspired to come back to school in August from their learning experiences at our camp. So thank you so much. We really are so grateful.
Thank you, Joanne. Still open to the public for comment?
Hi, I'm Peter Michaelson, and I'm the Principal of Vogel-Wetmore School. My comments are also about the ARPA Community Grant today. One of the items on there is for some upgrades to our playground over at Vogel-Wetmore. Really heading more towards a community playground feel. What we want is, of course, for our kids to be there, to use it, but that's a playground that gets used by lots of members of the community. It's located, I walked here from there today, so very close to the center of the city. So often, I'll come out at night, at the end of my day, there'll be people playing basketball on the court, swinging on the swings, but we're in need of some upgrades. The statistics I could share about COVID's effect on student fitness. The Board of Ed commitment to doubling elementary PE and much more is outlined in proposal, but I don't want to take too much of your time today, so I'll disclose by saying, I appreciate your interest in funding this grant. I urge you to vote in favor of it for the children and families of Torrington. They deserve a great place to play. Thank you.
Thank you. I will say I drive by that playground very late in the afternoon. In early evening, there's always a group of kids playing over there. Still open to the public if there are more public comments.
Hi, my name is Melissa Hurley, and this is my colleague and co-owner Andrew Mathuziak. We are the owners of Challenging Minds Counseling Center, and we just would like to let you know what our goal and our intention is with the grant. We have just transitioned from being a five-office suite to an 11-office suite, where we are now able to provide double the amount of support to our community. And with the grant, we're able to increase our play therapy time, we're able to increase our staff, which therefore can hopefully relieve some of the stress that's happening within the community.
We've been very fortunate. I started the company back in 2019 in a shoebox-sized office, and here we are, five years later, almost in a 3,000-square-foot building in another location of Bantam. We could not be more grateful to be here this evening. We thank you. Had a time for anything you can do.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the...
Hi, I'm Diane Tobin, Clinical Director of Behavioral Health Consulting Services. I'm here with my team, HR Sarah Calucci.
And I'm Ashley Anzie. I'm the program supervisor.
We just wanted to thank you for recognizing the grant that we applied to for the children in the clinic and in the homes for autism. We are here advocating for them mostly. We were asking for families that don't have the ability to pay for their co-pays, so they're left without services if they can't afford that. And Medicaid is not something that they can go to because they make too much money, so they're kind of sandwiched in between being able to get that extra money for them to be able to have services either in the home or in our center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming out. Other?
Hi, good evening. Mike Benelik, on behalf of Torrington Warrior Football and Cheer. We just wanted to thank you all so much for considering the grant. The things we're going to be able to do for our athletes to keep them safer and provide them with so much better opportunities, it's really unbelievable. So we just wanted to thank you in advance for that.
Thank you. Still open to the public if there's any?
Travis Lipinski, 237 Midgeon in Torrington. I just wanted to congratulate the current administration on their other civic things, as well as the grants that are going out, but the simple things like the planters on Main Street in downtown, Franklin Street, Franklin Plaza. I'm just really thankful for the details that you're doing, and thanks.
Thank you, Travis.
Hi, Jean Fusco, Executive Director at Susan B. Anthony Project. I also want to thank the mayor and the council for your thoughtful considerations of the needs of those in the community. At Susan B. Anthony Project, we, like Fish, are in the space of having to raise about half of our annual income a year, which is over $1 million. So every bit of consideration from the community who partners with us. We can't do this work alone for domestic and sexual violence victims, adults and children. And every year, we have 2,000 new victims a year who receive thousands and thousands of services, the majority from Torrington, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. I'm Christina Emery, Executive Director of Primetime House. Like the others before me, I want to thank you all for your support. Looking at this list, the impacts to the community are tremendous. Adults with mental illness, which is what we support, this grant will allow us to transport more folks from Torrington to our daily clubhouse and vocational programs. But the list helps children with special needs, small businesses. And I'm also on the executive committee of the Torrington Development Corporation, and that grant will allow the cultural district to add some community-wide events to draw visitors downtown and support local businesses. So thank you for all you've done for nonprofits.
Thank you, Christina. Any other comments?
Hi, I also wanted to say thank you as well to the City Council, the Board of Ed, Board of Finance, Public Safety Mayor Carbone, Vista Malanca, and Julie Schumberg. We appreciate the opportunity to be considered for a grant, especially since we're amongst so many educators and people in the community that do so much for their children. I'm proud to say that we just celebrated our 15th year in business. We've had incredible support from the community. Opening in 2008, it was the recession time. But since my husband worked 24/7, I was able to to not only survive, but grow. The community helped a ton with that as well. Recently, I was decorating our flower shop window at Lily &amp; Vine, and I tapped the window with a 100-pound slightly heavy wine press and shattered the window. So that kind of opened a can of worms, literally. And we applied for the facade grant and the Northwest Community Grant. I'm so thankful to be considered. We hope to improve the facade and also the corner by, you know, improving safety with the porch and safety inside, so that we can again open up workshops for kids and adults. We were previously doing lots of lots of programs before COVID. We tried to do Zoom for a little bit, but that didn't work out well. So with the grant, we, we hope to make things beautiful. We hope to offer a destination area along the railroad stop, if that should come to life. And if approved for the grant, we look forward to making those safety improvements and really making a beautiful corner for Lily &amp; Vine. So thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Other comments?
Hello, my name's Kayla Grabowski. I'm here representing Booker Memorial, and I'm their marketing and program coordinator. We are grateful to the ARPA Committee for the recommendation of funding for our new program in collaboration with the Josh O'Connor Foundation. In collaboration, the program will provide high school students the opportunity to take advanced aptitude testing, which will measure their natural born abilities and strengths. The results will help guide students in career and educational decisions and will provide them with the guideline to follow as they enter into their adult life. So Booker will play a key role in helping these students by setting them up with opportunities such as job shadowing, resume building, and giving them hands-on experience based on the careers listed in their results. So we just appreciate the city's support and are looking forward to our new program. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there. Well, I'm Donna, who's Director of Operations for the Northwest Connecticut YMCA. Just want to thank you all for considering our grant proposal for the middle school Be Active program. This is going to give us a chance to reach one of our target demographics, which is middle school kids who are going through a lot of changes in their personal lives, in their social lives, new schools, new groups of kids that they're hanging out with, and a lack of extracurricular opportunities. So this is going to give them a chance to, in a less competitive environment, participate in organized sports, to come to a safe place directly after school, spend time with our staff, socialize with new groups of kids, explore different options for physical activity, improve their physical fitness, and then have the opportunity to work with our Youth Service Bureau on social, emotional learning, one-on-one counseling, and basically have a great afternoon of fun with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that wished to address the board at this time?
A little taller than I am. Hi, Council. I'm from Torrington area, Families for Autism, TAFA Incorporated. I just wanted to also say thank you for considering us for ARPA funding. I've been here several times before advocating for Board of Ed, Board of Finance meetings on behalf of my younger son Connor. He's 11 on the autism spectrum, and he's the catalyst behind starting TAFA. So we started as a small parent support group and grew into what is now a community center on East Main Street. We start summer programs tomorrow servicing kids from birth to age 22 and hope to expand beyond that. It's going to, our community center is called Common Unity, focusing on what we have in common that unites us. And we are hoping to be able to broaden our services for children and families impacted by autism and special needs. So this money will allow us to sustain that mission and continue to grow post-pandemic. So thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Other comments? I thought Heather was getting up.
Hi, I'm Erin Johnston. I'm the Co-Executive Director of Fostering Family Hope. I just want to say thank you again for considering our grant proposal. We advocate for kids in foster care and their families, and this will allow us to really impact the families here in Torrington, providing them a beautiful space where they can bond and work towards reunification with their families in the foster care system, as well as bringing in local artists and the community to kind of build up that support network for them. So thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Before we get into the rest of our agenda? The important part of the agenda that's making the decision here? All right, there being no other members of the community here to discuss or to provide public comment. We'll move into item three, a little bit of business. 3A, I'll entertain a motion to accept the June 5 public hearing minutes for the Neighborhood Assistance Act. Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manichia. Are there questions or comments?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'm going to abstain, just for the record.
One extension. I'm sorry, for the record, Councilwoman Hona has abstained. All right, 3B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the June 5 public hearing minutes for the Sura Use Fee. Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Second.
By, I heard Councilwoman, we're what, first? Questions or comments in the minute? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One extension. Item 3C, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from June 5, 2023.
So move.
I heard Councilman Kevin Arrow and Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments in these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item four. I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director and Purchasing Agent to utilize a competitive bid of the Capital Region Council Government, that's the CROG, Capital Region Purchasing Council, CRPC, for the procurement of goods and services, as further explained in Public Works Director's memo dated June 15, 2023.
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Second by Councilman Kevin Arrow. Are there questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five. I will entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to enter into a side letter participation agreement with the CRCAG and OpenGov for permitting software and services.
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. And are there questions? I believe the contract and supporting documents were provided in your packet. No questions? Call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six. I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 143-242 to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city and apply for a Community Investment Fund 2030. You'll hear us refer to this as the CIF 2030 Grant in the sum of $4,578,100. Is that the modified number? It's Donna. I see Mr. Arrow. Oh, there you are. Okay, that is what's in there. All right. To accomplish the construction of a community fitness complex at the THS TMS Central Office Building being constructed at 50 Major Drive, as further described in the attached application. Do you have a motion? Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Hona. All right, the floor is open for questions. I see we have the co-chairs for the building committee and Donna Labby, who actually wrote the grant and sent it over, making it easy for me to sign and hit the send button if you approve. Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Yeah, could you explain what this is for? Two things. Number one, it says to complete the construction, so we've already started this?
So if I can have.
Why is it not complete? And why are we $4.5 million behind? Okay, on a $180 million school budget?
We're not $4.5 million behind. All right, we haven't started it. And to complete would mean to change the grass facilities to turf, add some lighting, and generally improve upon what is already in the base bid and to be able to pay for some of the things that are add alternates that there just won't be enough funds to cover.
You mean in $180 million?
That's right.
Funding, you don't have enough money?
These were alternates to the construction budget.
But within that, I know because I forwarded, I I proposed and I forwarded the request for a $20 million additional fees for that project.
That's right.
Within that $20 million additional, beyond the $160 million, somehow you couldn't find this money?
No, Paul. I'll tell you why, for escalating charges, escalating costs. Let me finish. The building will be done 100% per design, per plans and specs. The fields will be built, the sidewalks will be in asphalt, the fences will be up. There'll be grass. Grass is going to take two growing seasons and not stand up to the additional play of middle school sports and city sports. What we're trying to do here is to take a very good facility, and it will be a very good facility, and improve upon it. If you don't pass this grant, we're still going to have grass, we're still going to have fences, we're still going to have all those things. We won't have turf, we won't have lights, we won't have cement sidewalks. And you could debate how much $180 million should go.
Yes, we can. I'd be glad to have that conversation with the city council and your committee anytime. Within that, it's $160 million. Then 20 million, I was I was partaking in your meetings, monthly meetings. You came to me personally and asked me to forward this to the city council for an additional 20 million on top of this. And now you're telling me within that huge sum of $180 million, you you didn't plan to have the appropriate turf for the athletic fields, which I know from the meetings I was at, was a constant discussion prior to the $20 million upgrade.
It is planned. It's planned as an add alternate. If you're if you're familiar with what an add alternate is, which I know you are, it means the turf will be installed if there's money left over to allow. So the committee has to make a decision to spend the money inside the building, which I know you're a proponent of, or spend the money on turf. We're trying to do the the smart thing, which is to spend the money on the educational side of things. And if we have to live with grass, we're going to live with grass.
I would have preferred the smart thing be more along the lines of, when you ask for the additional $20 million, you actually included this in the cost so that the taxpayers knew that this is the cost right here. This is the cost, and it's this number dollar amount, and we're going to approve it. And now build the damn thing the way you want it to be built in the final product, not come back after $160 million, then another $20 million, and now another $4.5 million after the $20.
These are two different types of funding branches altogether. Right, if we ask for another $5 million to do these fields, 15% of that cost would fall upon the taxpayers of Torrington.
Yeah, I've been hearing this argument for years. And at the end of the day, why is this written up as, technically, this is?
It's written up as a community grant.
You've done this before.
Yeah, but why is it written up as a community fitness complex? What?
What the city has done in front with the skate park and the basketball courts, the playgrounds, the pool, and what we're trying to accomplish in the back, it's going to be as close to a community complex as we're ever going to have here in Torrington.
Okay.
Which is something that you've really championed.
Yeah, 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 no, no, no. I I'm all aware of the overall argument. Yes, I read, this is all good. It's just this, this, these are large dollar amounts. And again, I've said this many, many times over my eight years on this council. When we apply for grants, nothing. The state or the federal government or the city of Torrington, no government agency creates wealth. They don't create money. A grant is still taxpayer money.
Of course.
When everybody cringes at paying their state income tax, this is, these are the types of things they go to. And these buckets of money that exist within the state collecting war taxes get divvied up to all the communities. So being fiscally responsible and holding your own people fiscally responsible in the granting process, to me, is ultimately a responsibility of every city council to do that across the state.
I understand.
Torrington, would I agree with what?
Would you agree that if we aren't granted a $5 million grant, that same $5 million will go to a different community? We're not going to change the way the, you know, don't hate the game, you know, don't hate the player, hate the game type of thing. We're not going to change the fact that this money.
Hate the game for $180 million, Mario. That's 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 playing quite a lot of game, okay? That's a lot of freaking.
And what did that cost the Torrington taxpayers?
15%. Okay, all right, all right. You want to, you want to hang your argument there, and I understand that. But the other 85%, the other 85%, again, didn't come, it's not matter from heaven. It didn't come from some billionaire, it came from taxpayers. So how taxpayers are paying this, whether locally or statewide, it's all taxpayer money. So yes, it is great that we get this. But if we say no to this and another city picks it up, it's a, it's long overdue, long overdue for municipalities and and their their city councils to finally say no at some point and draw a line in the sand and say, we're not going to run our state this way. The highest, one of the highest tax rates in the country, we're not going to do it. And so fiscal responsibility, everybody's going to suck up, suck it up and say, we're going to, we're going to just make, you know, stand on this. So again, this is in light of $180 million, Mario, okay? 160 plus 20, 160 plus 20. It's not like there was nothing being done and suddenly you had a problem with athletic fields and you were asking for 5 million. That's a whole different story. This is subsequent to a 160 plus 120, $180 million grant to build this new school. And to say we don't have enough funds, to me.
That's not, Paul, you're you're not speaking, you're speaking a different tongue altogether. We have enough funds. We are trying to improve upon what is already designed.
No, no, by enough funds, I mean, the total project plan from everything, from the front door to the to the full, to the athletic fields. Everything is budgeted within that $160 million request. And then after COVID and plus 20, that to me is proper budgeting. That to me is a full budget for the full project. To come and say, oh, well, these athletic fields, this wasn't really part of the high school project, even though the high school feels. No, that's just word salad to me. And so enough, I'm not going to. I will vote against.
Go ahead.
If I may, yeah, all right. So, Councilman Kevin Arrow is on record, thank you. I I'm going to call, I think, Councilwoman Hona has been. This is why I hate being parked in Rhode Island on Zoom because raising my hand doesn't really work. But thank you. I just wanted to kind of say that, I mean, I think the whole project, we could spend $280 million and make all of the things we want in the school, but we came up with $180 million. It's creating a beautiful school. And this is an opportunity, and our job is Torrington City Council. We can't, we're not state reps, we can't fix the way the state government works. It's not what we all ran for. We're here to come up with as much as we can for our residents. This money is going to get spent somewhere. And this is an opportunity to take what's already going to be a great sports complex and make it longer lasting, make longer term. It's going to cost us less to take care of in the long term. We have so many conversations about what it takes to maintain our softball fields and our soccer fields from overuse. This is an opportunity to save us money on our properties down the road. I mean, we're debating over something that we may or may not get. My original question was going to be whether or not we have any idea what our chances are of getting this grant because I think this is an amazing opportunity to make.
There are only 54 communities that can get this grant.
Correct.
So for a five-year period. So we're hoping because of our, the way the project is going, that they, in the information that we received the other day, states that we, because we're building the project, we want to make sure it goes in line with that. So only 54 communities in the state of Connecticut can get this five, it's a five-year budget of 875 million.
Yes.
875 each year.
So these grants, these grants, Councilwoman, are limited to those priority districts, priority investment communities, Alliance District. They are highly competitive. In addition to this application that is being presented to the council this evening, there is another not-for-profit that is applying for grant funds in this round. And the city is also applying for grant funds in this round. Highly competitive. If you go online on the state's website for the Community Investment Fund Committee meetings, you will see the types of grants that are being funded. I think this one probably holds as good a chance of being awarded as any of the others. But we have submitted applications in the past and been denied. So it is, it's, it's a shot in the dark. These are two times a year the CIF funding comes through. So this application is in June, the next one would be in the winter. If they do deny the grant, they do give us a metric, a scoring metric that tells us where were the weaknesses, where were the strengths? It's an opportunity for us to go back at it if we are denied. But I think that this is exactly what these grant funds were established to provide for priority investment districts and Alliance School Districts.
I think you saw, I mean, Mr. Michael spoke about how how often Vogel's facilities are used. I know how often the track is used because of how many people complained about not being able to use it when they can't get back there in the beginning stages of setting up for the school project. So, I mean, I think as many opportunities to apply for these grants to to make this great project even better, it seems like a no-brainer to me.
Yeah, and you know, we're also adding tennis courts lined with pickleball lines. I know you guys are always in a pickle over that, but.
Kosher pickles.
Right.
Okay, if I may keep it, the conversation to the council members at this point, please. Councilwoman Ruette, you had a comment?
Yes, just, it's always love it when I agree with my peers on both, on both comments. You know, one is, you know, this is monies that the the state actually allocated. You know, we have no control of, but we have the opportunity. And as you mentioned, I think, Mario, you had mentioned that, you know, we need to take this opportunity, you don't want it to go to another district that really, you know, our our representation is Torrington. So I think the fact that Donna wrote a great application, congratulations, Donna. I will be supporting it because it's certainly something that we have talked about, having certainly something that's accessible to the entire community, not just.
Yep.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there other comments from the council members before I call the vote? All right, there being no other comments. I'll call this motion, all in favor? Any opposed?
I oppose.
If two oppose, Councilman Oliver and Councilman Kevin Arrow, four in favor, it passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Donna, if, I think there were just two additional documents that you need me to send to you. And then I'll get those to you first thing tomorrow morning. Okay, thank you. All right, let's see, item number seven. I am looking for in a motion to adopt resolution number 143243 authorizing the resubmission of an application to CIF 2030 for the Neighborhood Revitalization Program as further described in the Economic Development Director's memo dated June 14, 2023.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manichia. And just for the record, I know the memo speaks for itself, but I think the key word in this motion is that this is a re-application or a resubmission. This is one of those grants that we did submit. It was not awarded, however, when they returned the comments, they identified where the weaknesses were. We strengthened the application and with any luck this time, we can get this one awarded. This speaks directly to economic development, increasing property values, encouraging property owners to reinvest in their properties. For every dollar we put up, if they match that dollar, there's twice as much investment and improvement to the community. So, questions or comments? I'll call the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Right, item.
Eight. I'm going to do this as a a lump overall motion. And if there's any grant specific that a council member wishes to be pulled off, we could do it in the form of a sub-motion. So the motion that I am looking for is a recommendation, is a motion to approve the recommendation of the ARPA Committee towards the great community impact grants as presented. 18, 19, 20, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, there are 29 grants listed on this motion. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia, and second by Councilwoman Ruette. And the floor is open for discussion and comment.
Mayor, I'd like to comment. First, I want you, the council members, to know that there was almost $1.9 million worth of requests for only, and I'm sure Rista will correct me on the numbers, we could only award $868,000. So I want to thank my peers who served on the ARPA Review Committee, Maureen Pestey, who serves on the Board of Finance, John Kisco, who serves on the Board of Education, Molly Spino, who serves on the Board of Safety. Who am I missing?
Casey.
Casey McKenna, who serves on the Parks and Recreation. And Julie Schornberg is Julie here?
Yes, yes.
Julie, who sort of led us in this path as a, as most of us know, it was a memory end of understanding with the Northwest Community Foundation. But there were so many applications that were, I think, great value to our community and members of our community. And one of the things that was really important to the committee was, is it going to support Torrington residents? Whether it be children, adults, people with disabilities. And, you know, my credit to the nonprofits and the businesses that applied because they, you know, when you're not, when you don't have a grant writer in your pocket and you have volunteers running an organization, you know, they did an incredible job of expressing the need for their specific grant request. So my congratulations to all of the applicants. As you can imagine, going from 1.8 million in requests down to 868,000. And my close Julie and Rista with my numbers. It was a difficult task and we spent many hours as an ARPA subcommittee in reviewing these grants, got to know each other very well at 8 o'clock in the morning. But it was a difficult rating system. It was a good rating system that was created, you know, by the Northwest Community Foundation and Rista Malanga, who is our Economic Development Director. So I'm mentioning a lot of names because it does take a team of eyes and and comments on the values of all these grant applications. And unfortunately, there'll be motions forthcoming that will be denying some of those applications. But as Rista has mentioned, there might be other opportunities that are available. And this is federal money, which I know, again, Torrington was awarded, as many of you know, ARPA funds. I'm really proud of the way that Torrington actually utilized these monies in distributing, distributing to the community overall. So whether it be through the community impact grants or the facade money that was distributed, it was, it's money well spent for those organizations and businesses that I think will have, are greatly appreciative. As you heard in the public comments, which I'm so happy people came out to speak, it gives fellow council members an opportunity to know who you are and what you're doing within our communities. So, thank you. So I hope you'll all support this motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions or comments?
Councilwoman Hona, yes? Thank you. I want to thank the ARPA Committee too, because I can't imagine how heart-wrenching some of these decisions must have been. And I had been saying all along that, you know, this is really a great investment of federal money in a way that makes long and lasting really effects on our residents and on our families. And I just anecdotally want to share two stories. My my children dance at one of the dance studios that's receiving a grant here and received grant money in the first round. And one of the little dancers turned to the studio owner on recital day and said it was the best day of her life. And it was such a change and an addition of so many new students this year that really enriched the experience for everybody, my my kids as well. my, my kids as well. And my daughter was lucky enough to be one of the first rounds of kids that applied to go and do the aptitude testing that Booker is able to facilitate with this grant money. And it really, it was a very cool process and one that, you know, she was one of the first ones to say she wanted to go and nobody else really knew about it. And now I think the whole, the whole process has grown and it's kind of created some new excitement at the high school too. So these are all having impacts on all age groups. And there's volunteers across the city that really have like a renewed excitement about things that they can do with the coaching that they do and the organizations they work with. So thanks again to the committee for all of those early mornings.
Thank you. That's one little story that we thought was sort of interesting is that we actually had Drakeville Fire Department give money back that they didn't spend in the first round. Who gives money back from a nonprofit?
As I recall.
I thought that was the efficiency of, you know, how this money is being spent and.
Drakeville Fire Department. And when they asked, they actually had it down to the pennies. There, what they were purchasing, they had it right down to the 74 cents that they needed to complete the purchase.
So they gave back $1,187, you know, which, you know, to me, I think is, you know, the efficiency that many of these organizations, you know, and businesses that are small business owners that, you know, are looking at any opportunity to, you know, do something better with their business and with their organizations. All right, I'll be quiet.
Okay, Councilman Cavanaro.
Yeah, listen, I, I was really impressed by people who stepped up and spoke on behalf of, of your grants. I thought that was, it was very welcome to hear what it is you were planning to do with this money. And for those who are in the audience who don't know me, what you saw earlier in the discussion at the high school, this is me. Okay, so I'm the person who tends to ask some of the harder questions. And my harder questions are this, you know, this is a one-time-only federal grant. And again, grant money is not just from heaven. It comes from federal government, billions of dollars went, billions of dollars went through the economy to all towns, okay? All towns. Part of the consequence of that, you know, is inflation, it contributed to inflation. So my point is that there's, my point is that this is not likely to happen again. There are consequences to getting grant money, okay? That's all I'm trying to say. And I'm hoping that the people who get this money are, if from the get-go, trying to plan on if. The, the trouble here is if you're successful at what you're going to use this money for, what are the plans for when the money's not there in subsequent years? That's, that's a huge problem, okay? Building expectations and then suddenly there isn't the funding for that. And I, I certainly have no answers for that, but I'm just hoping that this conversation is happening. I'm hoping this conversation is happening between the groups that are getting this money and the city in some way. Because if you're successful at what you do, we obviously clearly want to continue that. But then the issue of where's the money come from has to be thought in advance, well in advance. And I think people in the audience see what happens when the funding isn't there. Once a project starts, it gets testy, so that's really common.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro. Are there any other council members that have comments? Councilwoman Ruette wanted to add one more.
Just to reply, that was a huge discussion with the Subcommittee on all of the grant applications.
Yeah, sure.
Is it a one-time request? Is it, you know, look at the Torrington Historical Society, there's less to support the restoration of the garden percolat- hotchess. Also, there are some that were just, there was a vehicle for primetime. Transportation's a huge issue with, throughout our entire Northwest Coroner. So a lot of it was, you know, a larger discussion and is it something sustainable? Now, when I, I think about Laureen, always would ask that question too. But, so I think in our awards that we're recommending tonight are things that we felt confident that, you know, there was going to be success at the end of that grant cycle to continue or to be sustainable.
Yeah, and that's all, I'm just asking, my, my, and sure, I was just saying that the grant, the people who receive this, just, just please be aware that in order to get money going forward on this, as, you know, as early as possible, you know, begin these conversations with the city to continue funding because this, you know, Santa Claus came once on this, this $10 million and he's retired, so.
So I'm gonna, I'm just gonna close the loop on this for those grant recipients, potential grant recipients in the audience. When this ARPA money came to the city of Torrington with handcuffs, you know, you can only spend this money in certain ways. We presented to this council a proposal to set aside a percentage of those funds for grant purposes. This council recognized the importance of doing this. And it was this council that said, yes, let's set aside this $1.8 million to do the community impact grants, to do facade improvement grants. So I want to express my gratitude to the council for recognizing how to make that money give us a bigger return on the investment. So that goes to all these council members as well. With that, I think I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And again, my gratitude to the board. All right, and then the second half of the decision-making, which was painstaking at 8:00 AM after spending a weekend scoring every single one of these applications, there were misses. So I would be looking for a motion for, to accept the recommendation from the ARPA Committee to deny those community impact grant requests as presented. There are sixteen in the list without belaboring and reading them all. Can I have this motion? Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. All right, the floor is open for questions or comments.
I guess I should comment, you know, just that this was probably the most difficult list. And again, to deny a request from an organization that has great need. Fortunately, I wasn't the one to have to make any of those calls. It was Rista and Julie, I don't know who split those calls up for both potential awards and for denials. But there were certainly reasons, you know, the applications weren't able to go forward.
Okay, other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, staying on the ARPA Committee or ARPA Grants, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Blight Task Force Ad Hoc Lead Abatement Grant Committee and the Torrington Area Health District to award a $3,200 grant from the lead abate grant, abatement grant funds established with ARPA funds to aid in the lead abatement of 326-328 Brightwood Avenue as further explained in the memo from Economic Development Director dated June 14th, 2023. It's a mouthful.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia, and seconded by Councilman Cavanaro. And just as a quick reminder, when this board was looking at the strategic spending of these ARPA funds, $200,000 was agreed to be set aside to eradicate or remediate lead paint or environmental concerns in residential neighborhoods, especially and particularly where those residences could no longer be used by families because of the lead paint poisoning. Our first grant was very successful, took a piece of property off the Blight list. It is being remodeled. It's just a piece of the funds that we were using was used for lead paint abatement. The rest of investment, again, we give them a dollar, they return $3 worth of investment. So this one is a much smaller request. This is a lot of the pre-mediation work that needs to be done. And I'll leave it at that if there are questions. No questions, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, item eleven, on the recommendation of the Public Works Director and the Purchasing Agent, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract agreement for the rental of portable toilets at A1 Portable Toilet of Thomaston, Connecticut, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated June 12th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And I heard Councilwoman Hona. Questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to enter a bid contract with West State Mechanical, Inc. of Litchfield, Connecticut for on-call general plumbing services and repairs for the city. The contract will be in effect from July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024 at the rate specified in the memo dated June 19th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cavanaro. Questions?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Was West State the only one that bid? That I see here? Or was it the only one that bid that was, that met all the criteria?
West State Mechanical was the only bidder.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen. I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to issue a letter of support for the Friendly Hands Food Bank CIF 2030 grant as further described in my memo dated June 15th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Cavanaro. Questions or comments?
So this is just a letter of recommendation to go with their application.
It is, oh, actually, yes, we broke this out into two. The memo covers all of the information. So right now, I'm just looking for authorization to issue a letter of support. They are responsible for filing the application. I think they've already been filling this out actually for the past few weeks. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, the second piece of this is I need a motion to authorize a mayor to issue, excuse me, on recommendation of the Small Cities Committee, I'll entertain a motion to forgive and release a small city's lien in the amount of $133,300 contingent upon the sale of Friendly Hands Food Bank property located at 50 King Street as further described in my memo dated June 15th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, do I hear, did I hear Councilwoman Hona? And, okay. All right. Questions on the memo? It is, as I've written out, this is a situation where in 20, in the year 2000, once the birth of Friendly Hands Food Bank occurred, they did receive small cities grant funds to acquire property, make improvements to the property, and provide operating expenses for the first year. The benchmark, when that grant was granted, was that they were to serve 500 families in the first year. Here we are 23 years later, they are serving 5,000 families a month. They have outgrown the space, the neighborhood really is overly burdened with the food giveaways and general traffic. There's a great opportunity for them to expand and enhance their services, providing more dignity to people that are accessing the food bank, providing a sustainable model that will help offset and cover some of their operating expenses. And the CIF 2030 Fund is a perfect fit for this very activity. Questions or comments?
Yeah, the committee met before tonight's meeting and we discussed it and approved it. And of course, we want to support what they do to purchase property and enhance food bank services. So I would recommend that we approve this.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Then I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving into item fifteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department Report for May 2023. Thank you, Councilman Cavanaro, seconded by Councilwoman Manichia. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Tax Collector and authorize tax refunds indicated on the list dated June 19th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments on the list or the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Tax Collector and authorize sewer use refunds indicated on list dated June 19th, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, and seconded by Councilman Waldron. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eighteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. Seconded by Councilman Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll go to the floor. Council, or Mr. Drew, anything from Public Works? Oh, Mr. Farley is here. Anything from the Treasurer's Office? Thank you. And Rista from Economic Development?
No, it'll be quick. So just in keeping line with the ARPA Committee and the, the funds that have been allocated, you may recall that we did contract with WBDC to administer grants to our for-profit businesses for growth. That program will be launching on Wednesday. We'll be having the official press release and then that grant round will be open for all for-profit businesses to apply to that program. So that is moving along and I just thought you would want to know.
Wait, is there a dollar amount, a gross dollar amount for that?
So the 400, $350,000 from ARPA and the WBDC, $50,000. So there's $400,000 in available grants to businesses.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Rista. Carol, anything from the City Clerk's Office? Am I missing anyone out there from my managing? Oh, Jeremy is here. All right, then let's move into the next agenda item. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Manichia, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll start to my left, Councilman Cavanaro.
I think I've said quite enough tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ruette?
I probably have two, but I'm going to add one comment. I wanted to congratulate Dr. Lindsay, who, we go back to serving on a committee, a school committee for Chef versus O'Neal. So for those of you, that was so many, 100 years ago at least. But, you know, Torrington should be really proud of her accomplishments. I also have one of her books that she signed for me when I was at the Legislature. And I'm just so grateful that, you know, she is active in our community and mayor. I don't know what you, what you passed today as mayor, but it's been a little secretive unless the mayor's going to disclose it in her report. But congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, Councilman Manichia.
Nothing tonight, thanks, Mayor.
Councilman Waldron.
Nothing from the mayor.
Councilman Oliver?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hona?
Yeah, I just, I had a question or was hoping maybe for an update. At the May 22nd meeting, we voted for the extra money for the auditors because it was taking longer for them to get the audit done. Do we have any update? Like, is that, is that audit due by June 30th?
It's, actually, it was due December 31st. We are on extension, we've had a number of extensions. This is a exceedingly difficult audit. We have a new comptroller. There were new business directors, a couple of them on the Board of Education side. It's not a new auditing firm, but a whole lot of coming up to speed and answering questions that they've never had to answer before. I can certainly at the next meeting have our comptroller attend and we can update the council on where that audit report is.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
That's all I have.
That's it, okay. All right, then moving into item 20, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting back to the public on agenda items only, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia, seconded by Councilman Cavanaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public again on agenda items only, please. We are open to the public again on agenda items only, please.
Hi, everybody. Tim Gaffney with Litchfield County Sports, and I cannot thank you enough for what you did with Kids Marathon. Three years of funding Kids Marathon. Mayor, you've been to many of them, you know the joy and what we're trying to do with the youth in our communities. Paul, I'll be planning year four in year one so that we make sure we keep this going. So from the bottom of my heart to everybody, thank you very much for the approval.
Thank you, Tim. So much for putting that last on the agenda. You, would you blow off the banquet?
Um, good evening, Mayor Carbone, um, councilmen, councilwomen. Karen Thomas, Friendly Hands Food Bank Executive Director. Um, just on behalf of all of us, we want to thank you for the support, um, with those, um, that were on the agenda this evening. Um, food insecurity is something that probably a lot of us in this room don't, um, really think about uh, until it's brought before us. Um, you know, you're hungry, you stop at Burger King on the way home, but there are five thousand families plus that we serve at that food bank. And it is dire, as the mayor has said, um, that we get this new building and applying for this grant with your support is really just something that's tremendous, not for only Torrington, but for Northwest Connecticut as a whole. So we'd like to thank you on our behalf.
And I'm Danny Arnett and I'm president of the board. Uh, and I'd like to extend my thanks as well. The numbers speak for themselves. Uh, we can no longer operate out of King Street. We've, uh, we had to have the police department there four times last time. So I think it's high time that we move on to bigger and better things. The five thousand is one number. We have programs in place where we expect to expand to not only daycare facilities, but senior facilities and also looking at the veterans. So again, your support is, uh, grateful and, uh, we hope that maybe next time we speak that we'll be in a new building. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny and Karen.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, City Council and everybody else. Introduce myself, my name is Stephen Thompson, I'm the owner-operator of Thy Neighbor's Farm in Torrington. Uh, a little bit about myself, and that's going to be in regards to the grant here. Um, thank you so much for funding our grant. Um, I was a Marine Corps Scout Sniper for ten years, uh, five years active, five years reserve. I moved to this town in two thousand seventeen, or two thousand fifteen, so it's been seven years with my wife. We have three children here, all born here. Um, and I, I originally never cared about food insecurity or the people of my town. And then I heard a message a couple of years into my living here that kind of changed my life forever. And when I heard that message, I realized the importance of feeding everybody and for not just serving yourself, but serving others. And I want to thank you for the way you've spent this money. I think it was very wise to, gives partial funding to be able to spread it out. And Paul, I don't know you, but, uh, I already like you and I think you should run for, you know, higher office for the state because it's important to have fiscal responsibility for everybody. I do disagree with you on one point, and that is that, uh, this money not coming from heaven. And, uh, for me, it certainly did, sir, because I've been praying for this and I've been praying for each and every one of you. And, uh, and I've been praying for in the audience as well, that the Lord would make this possible. And the Bible says, you know, the earth is the fullness of the Lord's and, uh, oh, the thou, there's a thousand cattle on the hills and they all belong to the Lord. So it also says that, uh, every good gift comes from God. So I'm just praising the Lord Jesus Christ right now for our reward in this, for people who don't know what we're doing. Uh, my family had a homestead where we were just worried about ourselves. And the crazy times that we were in, we wanted to be able to produce our own food. We soon realized that, what about everybody else? So we expand, I took out my 401K, spent all the money we had and expanded our property on Garrett Road and made a small farm. And the purpose of our farm is we're going to grow as much as possible to give away. And so what's happening is the town, the city through this grant is giving us fifteen thousand dollars. They're purchasing that much in produce and we're going to match one for one and give that away to the homeless and food insecure through, uh, Fish Northwest CT, through the Soup Kitchen and through Friendly Hands. And being in this town, I've heard before that there's so much focus on art that there was concerns, the town, that the leadership of this city was more concerned with feeding the eyes of the rich and not the stomachs of the poor. And I would say that after seeing how money has been spent tonight, that's been disproven. So I want to thank you for that. Now, I want to get a little bit into our farm and what we've done, but we've, we made amazing progress. We've won some different branches in the state for Caterpillar Tunnel so we could extend it into the season. We got another one so we can, um, feed schoolchildren in Torrington. So we're just super excited to be able to feed people, especially through Karen Thomas's organization and everybody else here. But there's something more important that in my prayers for all of you people, I made a promise to God that I would, uh, that I would tell you something if I was given the opportunity to speak in front of you. So here I am. And I will say I've served two tours in Afghanistan, two combat tours as a scout sniper team leader. And I'm more afraid now than I've ever been in combat. So here goes nothing. The Lord Jesus Christ said that the poor will always be among us. And, uh, so it's not really, I don't think it's a solvable issue till He returns. But I will say, He also said that those who hunger will always hunger and those who thirst will thirst again. But if you eat of His bread and drink of His blood, that you'll never hunger or thirst again. So my message to you is that everybody in this room, including myself, you know, we have all sinned. And I, I've lied, stolen, I've done all, everything. And I'm, I'm a murderer, I'm a liar, a stealer, a thief, you name it, I've committed every sin, every violation. And I didn't realize that the Lord Jesus Christ died for my sins too. And what I want to extend to you is the same thing that, um, changed my life. I, I want to tell you, um, I was so focused on death and killing as a scout sniper, nothing else satiated me. My hunger was for combat and when that war ended, I had nothing. So I heard the gospel message and the gospel is this. The Lord Jesus Christ came and He was a wonderful virgin. He lived a perfect, sinless life and died on the cross to make payment for your sin so that you can have a way to heaven. So the most important thing you can do in your life is make the choice to never hunger again, to never thirst again, to accept His free gift, which is to repent, to turn towards the Lord Jesus Christ, have a change of mind on all of this. Have a change of mind and a charge, a change of heart that leads to a change of action. And that's what happened to me. The Bible promises that He'll remove your heart of stone, give you a heart of flesh and give you an all-new spirit, all-new desires. And that's what occurred to me. So I extend that to everybody in here and I've been praying that one day, I've never seen you before, but I hope the next time, or not the next time, but maybe in the future, that the next time that we meet will be in heaven. And the only way to do that is through Jesus Christ. He's the way, the truth, and the life, and that none of them come to the Father but through Him. So I just pray that everybody would think about this tonight, maybe, and pray about it. Ask the Lord for forgiveness and He'll change your heart. Alls you have to do is repent, turn towards the Lord Jesus Christ and believe. So I, I thank you all and I love you all and that's why I'm risking the funding and everything else to tell you this. Because there is a way to heaven and it's Jesus Christ. So I love you guys, thank you very much. And if you ever have any questions, you can reach out to me, uh, Thy Neighbor's Farm, I'm in town, I'm not going anywhere. As, no matter how much you don't like this message. I go to New Hope Baptist Church in Torrington, which has just been exploding in growth, uh, as people here are, are looking, looking for answers. So I thank you and I just appreciate everything you've done and your wisdom and I'm, the Bible says that the Lord puts those in charge above you. So I thank the Lord for Him putting you in charge and I'll be continuing to pray for you and everybody else in this audience. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. All right, we're still open to the public on agenda items, please.
Thank you again, I'll be brief. My name is Andrew Matusiak, the owner of Challenging Minds. I just thought it would be appropriate to share this, uh, we had four years of business and then we realized we really had to expand to serve the community as we were growing and constantly turning people away that needed services and mental health. Um, we were getting a lot of people that wanted to hire, but we had nowhere to put them. And we found a building that was able to take us. We took forty-five thousand dollars out in a, in a loan, uh, assuming that it would go well, and we got the loan. And, uh, here we are getting the loan paid back. So that amount was never determined when we asked for the grant that we would get that same amount back and the amount of loan that we asked for. So, uh, call it God, call it kids, and I call it the spaghetti monster. I'm, I'm very thrilled tonight and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Still open to the public for agenda items.
I'll be in quicker. It's Peter Michelson again, Principal Level One. I just want to thank you for your support on the Level One, our, uh, Community Playground Grant and look forward to inviting you all to the ribbon-cutting event.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you. Final call for public comment on agenda items. All right, there being no further business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, I heard it's Councilman Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned, thank you all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.